I'd like to call to order this meeting of Independent School District 624 School Board. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll. Newmaster?
Here.
Streifoggi?
Here.
Thompson, here. Arcand?
Here.
Daniels?
Here.
Ellison?
Here.
I would ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have before us an agenda. I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Newmaster and a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And we have an agenda. For the first meeting of the calendar year, we do a reorganization of the board officers. Nominations are now in order for all school board offices. Would anyone like to make nominations for school board offices? Dr. Arcand?
I would like to nominate Ms. Ellison for Chair, Ms. Thompson for Vice Chair, Mr. Arcand, Dr. Arcand for Clerk, and Ms. Bellloyd for Treasurer.
I have been nominated as Chair and I accept the nomination. Ms. Thompson has been nominated as Vice Chair. Do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Dr. Arcand has been nominated as Clerk. Do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Ms. Bellloyd has been nominated as Treasurer. She was not able to be here this afternoon, but she did send a message to me in writing. Said, "I accept the nomination for Treasurer position." Are there any further nominations for the Office of Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, or Treasurer? Are there any further nominations for any office? If there are no further nominations, nominations are closed. I have been elected Chair, Angela Thompson has been elected Vice Chair, Scott Arcand has been elected Clerk, and Deb Bellloyd has been elected Treasurer by acclamation. Next, we have before us a consent agenda. Consent agenda is the various things that come before us monthly, including invoices and field trips and our donations from the community. And as always, the community is extremely generous and we are grateful for all that they do to support our teachers and students. I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Streifoggi. Any further questions or comments? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Um, hang on, let me look at my list here. Newmaster?
Aye.
Streifoggi?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand, aye. Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye. And the motion passes and we have a consent agenda. It is now time for the public forum portion of the meeting. There was one request submitted to speak. Public forum allows for three minutes per speaker. With the understanding that our speaker this evening will be communicating through an interpreter, we haven't extended the time allowed by one minute for a total of four minutes. When three minutes have passed and one minute remains, an orange card will be held up. When 30 seconds remain, a yellow card will be held up. At the end of the four minutes, a red card will be held up and the gavel will be tapped. Speakers will be called to the microphone and recognized one at a time. Only those individuals who have been recognized will be allowed to speak. School district policy and data privacy laws preclude personnel and student matters or data from being discussed publicly. Our speaker who requested to speak this evening is Gloria Nathanson. An update on registration information for 2024-2025. Ms. Vetti?
Good evening, Chair Ellison and members of the school board, our student rep and Dr. Kazmercheck. I get the, or have the pleasure of welcoming and starting off the presentation very briefly with a team of school leaders behind me that will talk about the various things that we are doing within the school district for, as we are welcoming students this spring for fall of 24-25.
Please introduce yourself when you come to the podium.
Good evening, I'm Sarah Spear. I'm principal at Vatnysite Elementary. It's great to see all of you. And I'm here on behalf of all nine elementary school principals. As we kick off 2024, welcome to White Bear kindergarten registration and welcoming all new families to our schools across our elementary sites. Marissa has done a wonderful job in partnering with us to put together the kindergarten, the elementary enrollment booklet. It has a lot of great information, details about all the curricular areas, and general information about coming to White Bear Lake and being a bear. There's a condensed version, you might say, on these bookmarks for big books for little kids, but they're awesome and they come in multiple languages. All of our schools are doing a kindergarten gathering. We hosted a different nights so parents can attend multiple sites and they do. Many families will come to one, two, three, and sometimes even more of our schools because our schools are all unique, because of where we're located or the staff within our buildings or whatever it might be partnerships that we have. There are different opportunities within our elementary schools. And parents hear about them and want to know more and come and visit. So we give many tours and I can speak for my own school. This has already begun as they look forward to next school year. So one of the exciting things is after students are registered, they are a bear. Every, every student gets an "I'm a bear" t-shirt and it's a huge deal. Everybody wants to be a bear in White Bear Lake. They may not have that white bear in their yard, but they got the bright orange shirt that they can wear up and down the streets. We're really excited to kick off this welcome to White Bear year once again. And you're all welcome to our schools too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Christina Pierre, principal at Sunrise Park Middle School. But I didn't talk about Sunrise Park at our parent information night. I talked about Mariner Middle School. So there was a lot of excitement around that. Sunrise and Central did our parent information nights a little bit differently. Central did theirs in person and Sunrise was more of a virtual drop-in. And so our incoming sixth graders are currently choosing their classes. They only have one class to choose. Their choice is music. Everything else is already selected for them. So it's an exciting start to our transition process. We really get going a lot more intensely in the spring. And then seventh and eighth graders, they'll start with their registration process a little bit later in January as well.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Kazmercheck, my name is Russ Reitz, the Unified High School Principal on special assignment. Excited to drop the special assignment title when we open next year. We are just starting our planning. In fact, counselors were in classrooms today, meeting with students for the first time to talk about registration for our new unified nine through 12 high school. That will continue this week. On Thursday night, we're bringing our families in. We'll meet at South Campus from six to seven with our incoming ninth grade families and from seven to eight PM with our returning 10 through 12 families to talk about what opportunities we now have as a nine through 12 high school. I do need to thank both staffs from North and South Campus for putting a lot of work into the course guide. The course guide, as you know, because you approved all of those new course changes, was a significant endeavor this year because we had to really look at what courses we'd now be offering as a nine-12 high school, find duplicate courses that used to be offered at both campuses, and then really look at what new courses we could now provide because of the unification of our two campuses. And I believe we've put together a comprehensive guide with lots of wonderful opportunities that will meet the needs of our student body and help prepare them for what life will look like for them after high school. So we're excited to get registration going. We hope to have our students all registered by the end of January.
I will just wrap up very quickly here with early childhood. They do have activities happening in February and March as we are welcoming the preschoolers. So we go from, from high school, middle school, elementary happening this month. And then later on in the springtime, our early childhood families will be doing, doing the same thing. And where, where bears begin, that will, will all start as well. So we're here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Vetti or the principals? All right, thank you so much. It's exciting. Move into informational item C2, Student Recognition. Dr. Kazmercheck.
All right, so tonight we're recognizing students who represented the district at state or national level competitions or awards. And certificates and bear pins have been distributed to the students. So congratulations to them and Marissa will have the video ready to roll.
All right, thank you. Congratulations, students. We'll move into informational item C3, the Student Report and Superintendent's Report. Ms. Van Cook and Dr. Kazmercheck.
All right. White Bear Lake sports and activities are in full swing as we make our way through the winter season. Boys varsity basketball is playing tonight against Blaine at 7:00 PM. The next girls' home game takes place Wednesday against Park at 7:00 PM as well. Other winter activities include wrestling, alpine skiing, and gymnastics. Please visit the White Bear Lake Athletics and Activities page for more information about the clubs and sports offered. Next Monday, we celebrate MLK Day with an event hosted by Parkview United Church at 8:00 AM with the theme of Leading Onward. There will be several acts taking place by the White Bear Lake Black Student Union. For more information, please contact Aaron Turner. Students participating for, our students are preparing for the end of semester one, which will take place January 24th. Go Bears!
Thank you very much, Ms. Van Cook. Okay?
All right, I'll roll right into mine. So last week, we welcomed everybody back from winter break and we're excited to have our students back in our buildings for 2024. From the looks of it, many of our students were able to answer the call put out during our winter break video with bears being spotted near and far. One of our submissions made it to us from as far away as Paris. So a collage of spotted bear submissions will be included in this weekend's Community E newsletter. So with the snow and cold weather comes a reminder of the invitation to join us to use the high school fieldhouse walking track, which will be open for community use from six to nine PM each Monday through Thursday. The opportunity is free and we ask that those who join us wear clean, dry shoes. Also related to the January weather, it is important to remember the emergency school closing information in case there is a need for it. If winter weather is so severe that schools need to close, start late or dismiss early, the news will be shared through local media outlets and district families will be alerted in the following ways as soon as a decision is made. A school messenger phone message and email will be sent to all families. And those who have opted in to receive text messages will be alerted in that way as well. A message will be posted on the district's homepage. Messages will be posted on the district's Facebook and Twitter pages. And it's important to always assume schools are open and in session unless you hear or see differently from a source listed above. Also, please be sure your contact information is updated with the district so our emergency communication reaches you. All right, our last update for this evening is bittersweet as we show our appreciation for Gray Seaver. Gray has served the district behind the scenes by videotaping school board meetings and helping with other video projects throughout the district and the local community cable channel for the last 25 years. As he heads off into retirement, we wish him well and thank him for his decades of service to the district and the community. And Gray, we invite you to come up to receive a small token of our appreciation and to take a celebratory photo with the school board. So as you're coming up, Gray, I want to read, we have a bearishy bar for, for Gray. Ingredients: long-serving, thoughtful, proud, dependable, conscientious, supportive, detailed, a team player, loyal, and a difference maker. So your many years of service have helped increase community engagement and support children in the White Bear Lake area school district. So thank you for making a difference. Right, so there's your candy bar. And we have a gift for you too. We're gonna, we're gonna come out and take a picture.
Is that everything, Dr. Kay?
That is everything.
All right. Thank you, Gray. I think this is a great reminder of how many people it takes to ensure that these school board meetings happen. And so thank you to everybody who, who does all this, this great work behind the scenes. All right, we'll move into, we don't have any discussion items for the evening, so we'll move right into our operational items. Operational item E1, action on the bids for Sunrise Park Conversion and Renovation Project. Mr. Wald?
Thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board. This is our last really big project of, from the 2019 bond referendum. And as Sunrise Park Middle School reopens as Mariner Middle School next fall, that allows us to get going on the Sunrise Park renovation. Recall that Sunrise Park will be the home to the school board, but also district offices, Transition Education Center, the Senior Center, and early childhood programs. Bids went, or were opened on, on December 7th. They came in a little bit lower than expected at $24,836,263. And for the work scopes in the packet tonight, that was about $750,000 under budget. We've learned that renovation projects can oftentimes come with surprises. And so we are, you know, thinking that there's a very good possibility of that. So we'll, we won't get too excited about that, spending that money because there, there may be some needs in that building as we dig into it. There were a few prod, a few work scopes that didn't have, two that didn't have any bidders. And so our team at Krels Anderson is working to get people to bid on that prod, those two projects. And then one for which the bids were really varied quite a lot. And so they're spending some time working with those contractors to make sure their bids are, represent what they expect. So the proposal is that the board accept the overall bid for the Sunrise Park Conversion and Renovation Project as presented in the amount of $24,836, uh, $836,000, $800, $24,836,263. Easy for me to say.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster. Any questions for Mr. Wald? All right. Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Streifoggi?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand, aye. Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye. And the motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Move into our next operational item. Just gonna move down in my board packet here. E2, action on the school board operating procedures for 2024. So every year at the beginning of the, the calendar year, the board members approve the rules of order and the board agenda format for the year. And if, in the board packet are the recommended rules of order and the board agenda format. So I would like to recommend that we approve the rules of order and the board agenda format for 2024. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second by Ms. Streifoggi. Any questions or concerns? Ms. Daniels?
Just to comment, these are the same rules of order, Robert's Rules of Order that we normally use in most practices and most boards do. So just wanted to.
Yes, I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? All right. All in favor of approval of the school board operating procedures, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And we have operating procedures for 2024. Thank you. Move into operational item E3, action on the school board members' compensation for 2024. And there is no change. We are recommending that the school board compensation stay the same. It's set at this organizational meeting and this law allows the clerk, treasurer, and superintendent of any district to receive such compensation as may be fixed by the board. The law also allows the board to fix compensation for other members of the board. So the members' rates were compensated by the following. Last year in 2023, Chair, $5,450. Vice Chair, $5,250. Clerk, $5,450. Treasurer, $5,250. And Members, $5,050. And this is an annual compensation, annual. So the board recommends keeping the same compensation levels for 2024. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster. Any further questions or concerns? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Streifoggi?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand, aye. Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you. Operational item E4, appointment of the Intermediate School District 916 Representative for 2024. Each year, the White Bear Lake Area School Board appoints a member of our school board to serve on the Intermediate School District 916 Board. We recommend that Kathleen Daniels serve on the Intermediate School District 916 Board for 2024. So the recommended action is that we appoint Kathleen Daniels as White Bear Lake Area Schools representative to the Intermediate School District 916 Board for 2024. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Streifoggi and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Thompson. Any questions or concerns? Ms. Daniels?
Privilege, so thank you.
We appreciate your service on the board. All right, seeing none. All in favor of approval of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion is passed. Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Operational item E5, action on the regular and work session meeting schedule for 2024-25. Dr. Kazmercheck?
All right, thanks, Chair Ellison, members of the board. So again, this, these next few items are annual approval items. So I'm gonna move through them relatively quickly. So, but if there are questions, obviously, please ask. But, so this first one, the recommended action is to approve the regular and work session meeting schedule for January 2024 to August 2025. And you've had an opportunity to, to review that in the packet. So that's the recommended action before you.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Operational item E6, action on the official publication for the school district for 2024. Dr. Kazmercheck.
All right, thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board. So the recommended action is to approve the White Bear Press as a legal publication for White Bear Lake Area Schools for 2024. I also just want to point out that Carter Johnson is here from White Bear Press. We really appreciate the work that they do and not, not every community has a newspaper anymore. And so we, we are thankful that we have the opportunity to work with, with Carter and his team for another year. So again, the recommended action is to approve the White Bear Press as a legal publication for White Bear Lake Area Schools for 2024.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Newmaster and a second by Ms. Thompson. Any questions or discussion? I just want to echo Dr. Kazmercheck and say that, you know, small newspapers are really going extinct all over the country. And so it's, it's an incredibly important part of a, a community to have a local newspaper. So I do appreciate the work that the White Bear Press does.
May I add one more thing?
Yes, of course.
Anytime we've done a community survey, and is Carter still here somewhere? Is Carter? Oh, there you are. Anytime we do a community survey from the school district, the, the newspaper always ranks quite high in terms of how community members get their information. So, so it's an important part of our communication strategy. So we appreciate you very much.
All right, any further questions or discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And motion is approved. Thank you. Move into operational item E7, action on the appointment of compliance officers. Dr. Kazmercheck.
All right, the recommended action is to approve the appointment of Matt Monz, Director of Human Resources and General Counsel, as a district human rights officer. Dr. Ellison Gillespie, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, as a Title IX Coordinator. And Lisa Orin, Director of Student Support Services, as a district ADA, 504 Coordinator in conformance with school board policies.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Streifoggi. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Thank you. Operational item E8, action on the local education agency authorization. Dr. Kazmercheck.
All right, the recommended action here is to authorize Dr. Wayne Kazmercheck, Superintendent, as a local education agency representative for the purpose of reviewing and approving documents required for compliance to federal programs included in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act for 2024.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Streifoggi and a second?
Second.
Dr. Newmaster or Ms. Daniels? Ms. Daniels, okay. Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Thank you. Operational item E9, action on designation of legal counsel. Dr. Kazmercheck.
All right, the recommended action here is to approve Knutson, Flynn, and Deans, PA, Ratwick, Rozak, and Maloney, PA, Squires, Waldsberger, and Mace, PA, and others as needed as our legal counsel for the calendar year 2024. The school board approves authorized personnel to contact legal counsel, including school board chair, school board vice chair, superintendent, assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, assistant superintendent for finance and operations, director of human resources, director of student support services, director of community services and recreation, director of communications and community relations, and director of technology and innovation.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve? A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Thompson. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Operational item E10, action on the official depositories for school district funds and authorized bank accounts and signatures. Kazmercheck.
All right, so you've had an opportunity to review that memo. So I'm, again, just going to read the recommended action and that is to approve the list of official depositories for school district funds and authorized bank accounts and signatures for 2024.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. Any questions or discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Streifoggi?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand, aye. Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye. And the motion passes. Operational item E11, action on annual authorization allowing administration to contract for budgeted items. Dr. Kazmercheck.
All right, the recommended action on this item is to confirm the school board's understanding that the superintendent and assistant superintendent for finance and operations have been duly authorized to lease, purchase, and contract for goods and services within the budget as approved by the board in amounts up to $175,000 and restatement of authorization for the same pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 123B, Point 5, Subdivision 2.
All right. You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. Any questions or discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster? Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan, aye. Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you. Operational item E12, action on the annual resolution to increase the micro purchase threshold. Dr. Kazmercheck?
All right, again, you've had an opportunity to review this. I will just read the recommended action. It's to approve the annual resolution to increase micro purchase threshold.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Strife Oji. Any questions or discussion? Right. This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji? Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan, aye. Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye. And the motion passes. And we are into our final operational item. The action on school board policies. I'm just gonna pull this up here. Okay, so this operational item will cover the policies of 401, 407, 413, 416, 499, 503, 506, 507, 510, 515, 516, 529, 607, and 613. This is the second reading for these policies. Our, our procedure is to, the, the policies come before us for our first read where we have an opportunity to ask questions and request changes, and then they come to us the following month for approval. And we usually approve these in one fell swoop. So I would ask for a motion to approve the passage of these policies.
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Newmaster and a second? Oh, by Ms. Daniels?
Yes, I'll second. Thompson.
Tom, Thompson second? Okay, thank you. Any question or discussion? Ms. Daniels?
A question, just a comment. I just want to acknowledge again the school board, the policy committee for the large amount of work, and also administrative assistant to Dr. Kazmercheck for putting them all together. It's a mountain of work when you read pages and pages and pages of the policy work that they've done and, and all the minute details that they attend to, and they're so careful. And I just really appreciate the hard work that goes into the policy committee.
Agreed. Thank you. All right. No further questions or discussion? All in favor of approval of the action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Thank you. I remember the last time we had 13 operational items, but this is just really, it's really an indication of all of the necessary structures and rules and details that need to be taken care of in order for the school board to operate, in order for the school district to operate, that come before us. And so I'm grateful for all the time that went into putting all of these things together from cabinet and staff and for my fellow school board members. So we'll move into the final item on the agenda, which is Board Forum. This is an opportunity for board members to share things that are going on in the community or things that they are participating in related to their roles on the school board. Does anyone have anything for Board Forum? Dr. Newmaster?
I hope I can do this without coughing. I just want to invite everybody to, I think it's the 40th anniversary Solal Lunar New Year that our Korean Cultural Association that started in White Bear and still continues. And we've appreciated the support for years in of space and tech help and all sorts of things. The people that come are probably from the Southern County metro area. It's grown beyond, but the core is still a bear group. And so February 10th, at what will become Sunrise Middle School, but is currently South Campus, and 40 years ago, we held our first event there when it was Mariner. So thank you to the district, and we welcome you all to share. It's a free event, so I believe there's a performance that will start at 1:00 if it starts on time. So watch for details maybe in the digital backpack or something. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Thompson?
I had the pleasure of visiting South Campus this weekend to attend the robotics team's open house. They invited some of the administration and some of the White Bear Lake staff to go and see what they're doing. And I am so glad that I, I had a very busy day and my schedule got off track, but I ended up making it. And I am very thankful that I did. Mr. Nyreen, Nyren Delroy and his team are just amazing, and the things that they're doing there are great. And they have found a way to incorporate middle school students into what they're doing there and just learning and hearing what these students are coming up with. I am very excited to see how they progress this year. Watch for information. He'll be sending out more information. But if you're interested or you have a child who would be interested in learning about the robotics team, I would highly recommend reaching out to the South Campus office. I'm sure they could connect you with Mr. Nyreen and, and you could get some more information. He will be hosting open houses pretty much every Saturday morning at South Campus. The only ask is that if you show up, please understand they welcome you to come and visit, but they are building a robot to try to get into the competition. And it is a lot of work with very long days. They are, I believe he said, six days a week they're getting together. And on Saturday, it's like their big day where they can get a good eight-hour day in together. So really just was a wonderful way to, you know, start the new year off and see what our students are doing in the district. And really was exciting. So I look forward to hearing more about what their team does. And, and it's great that they're able to kind of build a community of older students with some of our younger students so that it can transition on. And they even had students there or alumni who have come in to help in our, and work at Medtronics or different companies in the community, and they're all just pooling their resources together. So it's really exciting. Just wanted to share.
Thank you. I'm hoping to get to one of the, the events in the coming Saturdays, too. Other things for Board Forum. Ms. Daniels?
Quickly, if you haven't been up walking at the fieldhouse and you're, it's cold and dark outside from 6:00 to 9:00 at night, it's a good place for a walk, walking with a friend. Just get out, do some loops. It feels really great. So try to get, get up there. It's a wonderful facility. It's great to have it open to the community.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
Just off of that, I believe we put out our fourth video for Building Our Future Update, and just to see how far we've come and the fact that we have that open now and our community can use it. It really is just a great reminder of, of how lucky we are in our community.
I just have one thing. The Regional History Day event that is held every year at the White Bear Lake South Campus is Saturday, March 23rd. White Bear has been hosting this regional event at South for the last several years. And there are 12 events all over the state. So we're really, it's really wonderful that it's in our community. And they always need judges for this event. You don't have to have a degree in history. You just have to be willing to talk to some students and look at some projects and, you know, make a kid's day by being interested in their work. So you can sign up to be a judge at the event. So again, the event is Saturday, March 23rd at South Campus, and you can sign up by going to the History Day website, which is mnhs.org/historyday. And it would be wonderful to see some of our community members in there supporting kids, not only from White Bear, but also the area. All right. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Chair Ellison, I move for an adjournment.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And we are adjourned.